All right. Good evening and welcome to the City Council Special Meeting of Tuesday, March 26, 2024. Two items on the agenda, the first being discussion regarding Summit Lake's participation agreement, Amendment Two, and memorandum of understanding and submittal of an application for a high-hazard potential dam grant opportunity for repair of Misty Lake Dam. Ms. Beth?
Hi. Hello, everyone. My name is Beth McCullough. I'm an Assistant City Attorney here with the city. And I wanted to give you an update on some items that we prepared in conjunction with some of the private parties involved really quickly for your consideration. But not all of you have had the benefit of seeing this project from inception, so we also wanted to take an opportunity to catch you up on some of the history because there's a lot of it, if any of you are aware of this particular project. So this is the Misty Lake Dam. I'm sure you're familiar with it. The little red cursor shows where the dam approximately is on the north side of Summit Lake. And this lake lies between two subdivisions, Summit Lake Villas on the west and Summit Lakes on the east. So these neighborhoods have a stormwater system that consists of seven lakes, and the Misty Lake Dam around 2011 started catching people's attention for having some issues, some saturation issues on one part. And so the OWRB ultimately also classified it as a high-hazard dam and determined it was in need of repair. I think it was around July of 2015. I didn't locate this date, but it's in your staff report. The first consent order was entered by the OWRB, which required that certain measures be taken with the dam. The city was not a party to that consent order because we don't own the dam. The POAs own the dam. It was developed by the original developer, Summit Lakes LLC. And whenever those POAs took over the neighborhoods, it became the property of those POAs jointly, and it split between the two different plats for those neighborhoods. So that consent order required that certain measures be taken and that the POAs look into repairs, which they did. Finding the cost to be very high, they approached the city regarding what could be done. Now, the city at that time had another project underway, the Cedar Lake Dam, I think, which was Crystal Lake Dam, I believe. And what ultimately happened after long negotiations, which I was not here for personally, there was an agreement entered into very similar to that, which was essentially a privately funded solution so that the dam could be maintained by the city going forward once it was in good working condition. So this participation agreement was originally entered into on June 27, 2017. And the city and Norman Municipal Authority were parties, as well as three private parties, the two POAs that I've mentioned, as well as the developer, Summit Lakes LLC. The basic terms are set out for you here. What was anticipated was that the private parties would be able to obtain loans for their portion of the repairs, and that was split between the two POAs, as well as some input from the developer, which still had at least one section left to plat and develop. So they had some assessments to throw in for that portion as well. So these funds were supposed to come from loans, and the city would ultimately collect through private assessment, through the water bills, the way we had done for Cedar Lake Dam. There were particular procedures for how this would all happen, when it would happen, and a timing for the funding of the actual project, which would be bid as a public construction project. After the construction, the plan was that the state agency, the OWRB, the Oklahoma Water Resources Board, would approve these repairs so that the city could assume, quote, "ownership and maintenance of the dam" upon that successful completion. So following the execution of this document in 2017, the POAs had encountered significant funding issues. A lot of time passed while we were trying to figure out what can be done. Ultimately, the lending institutions that were ultimately, that were originally contemplated, they could not extend the loans the way that they believed they could in the beginning. So there was a lot of quick thinking on the POAs' part. They started pre-collecting the assessments that they had already approved from whoever would voluntarily pay those forward, instead of waiting for the construction to be done and assessing them through water bills. They got a significant amount of funds that way, as well as supplemented with savings. And in about 2020 is when they had sufficient funds collected for us to move forward with public bidding. At that time, there was a request that some of the timing mechanisms in the original agreement be changed. So in January 2021, which was the last time we came in front of you and talked about this project, some amendments were proposed to the participation agreement. This amendment number one, like I said, altered the funding timing. Essentially, instead of giving us the money before bidding, the POAs wanted to give it after bidding, but before the contract was approved by council, which we agreed to, and that language went in there. We also put in language about the loan and assessment being altered and then paying through other ways, in which case there might not be any assessment collection by the city. And the developer opted to fund their Section 11 assessments early in order to help finance the project and move it along. And then the city also requested some language regarding cost overages. There were a lot of concerns at this time about what do we do? So an idea that was proposed was that the parties move forward with a construction manager at risk format so that we could get guaranteed maximum price and lessen our exposure after the GMP was accepted. So everyone agreed to this, and we moved forward pretty hopeful, although at this time there was some concern. This is 2021, and we had some pretty old estimates already. At that time, the amount of funding was just over $600,000. So in early 2021, we had to resubmit construction plans to OWRB to get reapproval because it had been several years. We also had to jointly draft that RFQ according to the agreement. All of that was underway. In May, we received the preapproval, and in July, the RFQ was released for the CMAR. By October, we brought back a contract with Downey Construction, which was accepted. And so at that time, we had the funding from the POAs in a special city account designated for only that purpose. Whenever Downey took it to bid, they came back with a guaranteed maximum price proposal just over $1 million, so over $400,000 more than what we had actually funded for the project. So the parties took a long time to try to think of ideas, what can we do with that? Ultimately, we found that there really wasn't a way to move forward with Downey under that treaty. So the parties jointly opted to let it lapse. Downey was paid for their bid work, and that contract's essentially concluded now. So there was about six months of regrouping, and the private parties approached the city about an idea that they could privately construct this project, which was a big change. We'd only been talking about the city controlling the construction, which was really essential to us taking over the project because we knew what we'd be getting because we did it. So there are a lot of factors to consider. We had to consult with OWRB, who had been on board from the beginning. We had to make sure that they would allow this under the consent order. And so that started a series of discussions with OWRB that lasted, from what I can tell, about a year. Because what was necessary was that they enter a whole new consent order. And by this time, the construction plans had lapsed again, so those had to be approved again. It was mainly the POAs that undertook the efforts with the consent order because they are the parties to it. The city was concerned to make sure that there was a procedure in place that protected us and that adequately reviewed the construction before it was handed over to us. So we essentially made sure that that language was in the consent order, and OWRB and the POAs worked together to get it approved September 27, 2023. And so I think it was probably the day after that I heard from the attorney for the POA saying, okay, we're ready, let's go. And we started talking about things. And in October, I got an email where essentially it was a proposal that we need to do this by fee ownership. This is where kind of a difference in understanding has arisen between the private parties and the city. The city had always anticipated taking ownership by easement. That's allowed under the Dam Safety Act, and that's the way the agreement had been set up, we believed. A fee ownership was a much different thing with a lot of moving parts, a lot of which weren't contemplated by the agreement and would take a lot of work to add. So we talked about this for a couple of months and eventually came to an impasse where the private parties requested a meeting that included City Manager Pyle, Mayor Heikola, and Councilmember Ball, where we discussed these ownership issues. What would it look like? Is this something we should even consider? What would it look like if we brought this back to you? During that meeting, we came to the conclusion that it should be explored. And so following the holidays, we've spent the better part of this year exploring just that. How would we get this done? Is there a way to adequately protect the city? From our perspective, we have found ways to protect the city while taking over ownership. We found a method to avoid having to entirely replat the properties. We were just getting down to really narrowing down the property that would be in the deed, as well as all of the little title issues. Now we're essentially looking at a purchase without a closing title company involved. So we're doing title work. We're looking at covenants, all of those little things. So we are getting really close on a draft when, on March 11, the OWRB reached out to me, actually, with notification of a grant opportunity for the Misty Lake Dam. We immediately investigated this. We got on the phone with them the next day, got information, and we took it to the private parties on the 13th, the day after that. They molded over, and on the 15th of March, they requested that we pursue this grant opportunity. And the quick timing was important because the application is due by the 31st. So we had to bring items for your consideration tonight in order to make it happen. So essentially, this is a high-hazard potential dam specific grant opportunity. It has been out in the past. It's just that the OWRB never felt that we were really a contender for it before. This year, we are one of, what they said, is the few construction-ready projects that they have. So we got the impression that there was a lot better chance for funding this year. Additionally, the OWRB has confirmed that there is a lot more federal funding in this project. So they anticipate a lot more money coming to them to distribute to projects. So overall, while they don't promise anything, it seemed like a very encouraging opportunity. So all of these efforts culminated in two items that are on your agenda tonight, 11 and 12. First, what we needed was just a really quick, short-as-possible agreement that gave us permission to pursue this grant opportunity by the POAs because they're the owner of the dam. OWRB needs to be sure that they're on board with us submitting for them. Additionally, we had some loose ends to tie up. We aren't, this is a public construction again, not a CMAR. So this agreement cleans up some of that. But more importantly, what it acknowledges is there's still more to do. That's why, in addition to an amendment, it's a memorandum of understanding, an agreement to agree on these items that need to be nailed down. One of those is the exact property that's going to be transferred in ownership. It could be whether or not we actually proceed with the grant as public construction, or if we don't get it, or if it's deemed to not be the right opportunity, we proceed back to private construction. So this agreement leaves a lot of things to be determined when we have more information, but it gives us the permissions we need right now to not miss this opportunity. The second item is a resolution, which, like other grant resolutions, just lays out the project. This has a little more specifics about the background of this case, but ultimately, it specifies the qualifications of this project for the grant and gives us permission to pursue it. So if these items are approved, we would submit that application. We anticipate that OWRB will know how much funding it is getting by mid-April. And by June, we should have a really good idea of our chances for getting it, perhaps even before. I know they intend to keep us in the loop. By June, we should be submitting a lot of information, firming up our eligibility for the project, knowing, hopefully, about how much funding should be coming. So even though we want to pursue this opportunity, we don't want to lose any ground on what we've done. The parties have agreed that we're going to continue negotiations. We're going to continue to identify and fill in what gaps we can and to just keep kind of just watching where the wind blows and seeing how we can get this done and keeping our options open. But ultimately, one way or another, we will be bringing an Amendment Three to you, which is anticipated to be the final final. We really hope, the final final saying, this is what we're doing, this is how we're going to do it, and this is when we're going to do it. And this is how we'll pay for it. So with all of that, do you have any questions about these items or the project?
Not a question. But just to clarify, this is one of three high-risk dams in Norman. And being high-risk, that means there's a substantial risk of loss of life if anything happens to this dam. And I know the folks at Summit Lakes, they've been doing everything in their power to get this through. So taking this first step to get this grant saved them a lot of money, and I think it will help the city out. Because I think the mayor agrees with me. This dam should be controlled by the city due to its high-risk nature. So that's all I got.
I would say that needs to be controlled by the city because it's the same as a bridge or a highway or any other municipal structure. It's just, it's something that if we leave up to private ownership in a lake, a pond this size, whatever, water this size, the inherent danger of people downstream from it bursting is terrible. Yes, sir.
I just want to say that, yeah, I think we need to explore this grant opportunity.
Yes, ma'am.
Just had a question about the 65-35 federal slash local match. The 35% will be taken out of the money that we still, do we still have the money in a special account? Well, that, is that going to allocate to, like, our local match percentage for the grant?
Yes, it will. The agreement specifies that. It also has a caveat because it's, some of the funds may need to be utilized to do some current maintenance work. It goes toward the project, but it won't count within the grant. But even excluding some of those funds that may need to be used for that, city has looked as well as we can at the Downey proposal to ensure that we think we have enough funding to match that 35, even doing that.
Okay. Perfect.
Other questions? Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
All right. Item two. Consideration of adjourning into executive session is authorized by Oklahoma Statutes Title 25307b4 to discuss pending litigation in the case of City Norman versus the Uplands Development Company LLC et al. in the Cleveland County District Court case, and it gives the number, in the City of Norman versus Hallbrook Development Group One LLC et al. in the Cleveland County District Court case and its number. Do I have a motion go into executive session?
Second.
Motion and second. We'll go into executive session. We'll go into executive session.
Good evening, and welcome to the City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority meeting of March 26, 2024. Madam Clerk, will you please call the row?
Councilmember Ball, Councilmember Schuler, Councilmember Montoya, Councilmember Grant, Councilmember Nash, Councilmember Foreman, absent, Councilmember Holman, Councilmember Peacock, Mayor Haikala.
I am here. Would you all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Item number one, a proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma proclaiming Sunday, April 21, 2024, as Arbor Day in the city of Norman. I'll entertain a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. I have a motion and second. The motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes. Yeah, there it goes. It won't let me vote. Yeah, now you can cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the proclamation passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll read the proclamation. A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma proclaiming Sunday, April 21, 2024, as Arbor Day in the city of Norman. Whereas Oklahoma has recognized Arbor Day through observance and ceremonies for more than 100 years, and whereas we recognize the importance of planting trees to beautify our parks and public spaces around our homes and businesses, whereas we recognize the environmental, social, and economic benefits of trees such as providing shade, creating a sense of community, and visually pleasing neighborhoods, reducing home heating and cooling costs, reducing air pollution, noise pollution, and soil erosion, and enhancing property value and economic vitality of business areas, and whereas it is the purpose of Arbor Day to encourage the planting of trees in urban and rural areas, promote proper management of trees, and to remember the many benefits we receive from trees, and whereas Norman has been awarded for the 21st consecutive year Tree City USA status by the Arbor Day Foundation, and whereas the city of Norman Parks and Recreation and City Tree Board have scheduled an Arbor Day observance Sunday, April 21, 2024, at 3:00 PM in Reeves Park with a tree planting and presentation. Now, therefore I, mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim Sunday, April 21, 2024, as Arbor Day in the city of Norman, and encourage all citizens to observe Arbor Day by planting an Oklahoma proven tree for the benefit of all
Ladies and gentlemen, with great pride that I accept the proclamation on behalf of my beloved town, Norman, Oklahoma, for continuing to be designated a Tree City USA, this honor reflects our unwavering commitment to not only nurturing but also expanding our arborum forest, and also I wanted to mention that this, we do the tree story, the Norman Tree Board does a tree story every year, and we'll be displaying the winners at Earth Day, and this year we added, with the story, we added artwork. So we have the story and artwork, and we have six winners from Norman, and we'll be displaying those at the Earth Day. So everybody come out to Earth Day, and hopefully it won't rain.
Rain's good for trees, Don. Rain's good for trees.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. It's now time for council announcements, and I'll start with Ward Eight.
I don't have much to say other than there's an item tonight, item number 35. It's a discussion around an ADU ordinance, an accessory dwelling unit ordinance. I've got a lot to say about this item when it comes up, but I just want to express how excited I am that we're actually getting to this finally. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Holman?
Okay, a couple things. Medieval Fair is next weekend at Reeves Park, so I want to encourage everybody to get out and check that out. Always a great time. Our, if I understand, our biggest single event that we have in the city of Norman is Medieval Fair, as far as the number of people all at once that come to Norman over that weekend. So very excited for that. Again, that's next weekend, and then also the Chocolate Festival is making a return, and it will be this weekend at the Noun Hotel. And then also wanted to mention that next Thursday, on the 4th, here, actually at St. Thomas More, there is a meeting at 6:00 PM for those that live near Jenkins Avenue. This is in regard to the Jenkins Avenue Widening and Improvement Project from Lindsay Street South all the way to Lloyd Noble Center, basically. So if you're affected by this project, if you own property that fronts it, if you live in the neighborhood like Evan and I do, next to it, then you're welcome to attend this meeting. It's kind of the kickoff or part of the environmental assessment, if I understand. So if you have any questions about it, city staff will be there, and we can talk about it some more before that project gets underway later this year. And then also wanted to remind everybody, this Thursday here at City Hall, 4:00 PM, is the Community Planning and Transportation Committee meeting. Every month in this committee, we get an update from city staff about public transit, the ridership report, ongoing road construction projects like James Garner Boulevard, or Porter Avenue, or projects that will be upcoming like Jenkins Avenue. But we'll also, this week, we will be talking about traffic collision data in the city of Norman, and where the hotspots are, what intersections are the most dangerous in Norman, what parts of Highway 9 are the most dangerous, and we'll be talking about possible solutions that we can send on to ODOT, or that we can implement locally that might help make our streets safer in Norman. So if you're interested in that, or either of those subjects, tune in on Thursday at 4:00 PM. You're welcome to attend in person here at City Hall, or the meeting is livestreamed on the City of Norman YouTube channel. Like I said, live, and you can re-watch it anytime. And then the last thing, just want to encourage everybody that lives in Ward Two to get out and vote next Thursday, or this Thursday, Friday, and next Tuesday in the runoff election. As we've seen many times in Norman, including recently in the franchise agreement vote, the last two, actually, the ONG agreement passed by, I think, 35 votes back in September, and then the OGNE franchise failed by 34 votes. So in a city this large, 130,000-plus people, we've seen many times how local elections can be decided by just a few votes. So if you live in Ward Two, make sure you get out and cast your vote for either of those candidates running next Tuesday. And that's all I have for this week. Thank you.
Councilmember?
No announcements this week. Thank you.
Councilmember?
Ward Four in greater Norman, an event highlight for next week on April 3rd, so next Wednesday, from 4:00 to 5:30 PM in the city of Norman Development Center, so 225 North Webster, we will have the community kickoff event for our Norman Solar Initiative. Norman residents, businesses, and nonprofits can learn more about this five-month program, discuss our city-led initiative with coordinators, and meet solar experts with 820. We will have more information, as we first discussed, in our 81723 finance meeting on how low-to-moder income earners and those who rent to low-to-moder income earners can participate, and what special incentives are available. We intend to be proactive in helping people get connected during this enrollment period, and finding ways to get those pass-through savings to all of my folks, too. A few notes about our agenda. I would like to acknowledge Ward Four residents being appointed or reappointed to the following boards. Serving another term on the Public Safety Oversight Board, Lee Greenleaf. Serving another term on the UMP TIF Oversight Committee, Kami Kellis. Serving a new term on the Center City Urban Design and Implementation Plan Ad hoc Committee, Lee Hall. Thank you all for your time and service. Last, I'd like to highlight four ACOD grants that will net us the following. Items 13 and 14 are in regards to three solar electric vehicle charging stations. Item 19 is about replacing two CNG fueling compressors. Item 20 nets us 26 alternative fuel vehicles and one electric truck. Item 21 nets us two electric bus charging stations. I would like to extend a congratulations to staff for successfully pursuing these grants. Thank you.
Good evening, Norman, Oklahoma, and Ward Three. I hope this evening finds you all well. So first, Ward Three, as Councilmember Holman said, on April 2nd, we have the Norman Public School election for seat number four, and the in-person and absentee voting starts this Thursday and Friday. And again, the election is Tuesday, April 2nd, so make sure you make a plan to vote and go see your favorite poll workers. Then, Ward Three, we are a mix of polycart service of Monday and Tuesday. So when it comes to residential spring cleanup, if your polycart service is Monday, it is April 6th, and if your polycart service is Tuesday, it is April 13th. Then, also note, on April 21st, I will be hosting a town hall at the West Norman Library, again, April 21st, 3:00 to 5:00 PM, and the address is 300 Norman Center Court. Then, if there are any accounting or finance students in the crowd, or watching online, or if you know one, I have been invited to return as a panelist by the Beta Alpha Psi Chapter of the University of Oklahoma Price College of Business, and the panelist discussion will be about alternative careers in accounting. Everyone assumes CPAs do tax. I will be speaking about my public accounting practice of business valuation and litigation support for marital dissolution, gift and estate tax preparation and planning, and commercial litigation, and other matters regarding value and calculations in civil litigation. So that is April 16 at 6:00 PM at the Oklahoma Memorial Union in the Frontier Room. So please pass that on to your future accounting and finance students. Thank you all for being here.
Councilmember?
Great. I've got a couple announcements tonight. So some Ward Two residents may have seen that there is a road closure, but it's for a bridge on Crestmont Street. So the bridge that spans over Merkel Creek there, between Merkel Drive and North Mercedes Drive. This is scheduled maintenance for the bridge, so they're doing some deckwork repair, which is like the road structure, repair of the approach slabs that connect the bridge to the road surface, and then also some debris removal underneath the bridge around kind of the stormwater management along the base. This bridge will be closed until April 2nd, so one week from today, weather permitting. Other things that have already been touched on, Ward Two has Tuesday polycart service, so our Large Trash Day is April 13th. I, let's see, I will also belabor the point about the Ward Two election next week, on the 2nd. So if you are in Ward Two, you get a chance to vote for my replacement, so please, yeah, please show up for that. And then I also want to let everybody know that I will not be here for the next council meeting on April 9th. I have a work conference that I will be out of town for, so just letting people know about that. So I think those are all the announcements that I have. Thanks.
All right. I don't think I can beat Chocolate Festivals and Medieval Fair, but we'll see. I hope everybody had a good Palm Sunday. Hope everybody has a happy Good Friday and a happy Easter. Enjoy the time with your family, eat some good food.
Enjoy the time with your family, eat some good food, and remember what the holiday's all about. The rest of these things, I'm gonna have at least one more chance to remind you, so I'll go through quick. On May the Third will be the most of Ward One's spring cleanup, so get your trash cans ready. May Fourth, we'll be having electronics drop-off at Andrews Park. So, you have anything with a cord, you can bring it up there, and we will get it taken care of for you. April Twenty-seventh, I'll be hosting a BMX, or a park cleanup at the BMX Bike Park over off of Twenty-Fourth and Lindsay. I want to thank Susan Smith for giving me the nudge on the shoulder to get all the ball rolling on that. So, it's kind of some rough terrain out there, so if you know some younger people, have any organizations that want to come out there and help out. Like I said, me and my kids walk the trail. It's a very cool trail back there. I can't believe the city has things, I mean skate parks, BMX bike trails, new arena. Norman's amazing. So, you know, if you want to help keep it clean and keep it going for the kids, invite you to come out there on the Twenty-seventh. Applications are now open for the 2024-25 Norman Youth Council. The deadline's May Twenty-fourth. I'm telling you about this, and I will keep bringing this up, because you need two letters of recommendation. So, take it from somebody who knows. If you want a good letter of recommendation, ask them now, and don't wait until three days before the deadline. Okay? So, and then the very last thing, April Eighth, we will be having the Solar Eclipse here in Oklahoma. I know we're not in the main, main track of it, but I've seen everything from states calling out the National Guard, to schools being closed, to everything else, to come get my free solar glasses at T-Mobile with my app. So, you know, don't know what's gonna happen, but be safe and enjoy it. It's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, and that's all I have.
I have one other fun thing to announce, and that's the Corn Fairy Tour Compliance Solutions Championship, which is gonna be here June Seventeenth through Twenty-third at the Jimmy Austin Golf Course. And what that is, is the way to get into the PGA, these young people have to sit down and perform well, and see if they can get a low enough score to be able to do. We won't be on there. But, as I say, it's June Seventeenth through Twenty-third at Jimmy Austin Golf Course. All right. Next item is the Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that city council, by unanimous consent, can designate these routine agenda items that they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of all council members, then that item will be heard in regular order. Staff recommends that Item Two through Item Twenty-seven be placed on the Consent Docket. I need a motion to place Items Two through Twenty-seven on the Consent Docket. I have a motion and second. Motion on the floor is to place Items Two through Twenty-seven on the Consent Docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to place Items Two through Twenty-seven on the Consent Docket passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to approve the Consent Docket. I have a motion and second. Is there, are there any comments from council regarding any item on the Consent Docket? Yes, sir.
Sorry?
Seventeen, real quick. Project. This is a project that's partially in Ward Seven, partially in Ward Four, along Classen Boulevard, basically from Brooks Street South all the way to where Classen turns into Twelfth at the Seven-Eleven and Walmart Neighborhood Market down there. So, this is a project I'm personally real excited about getting done. The area south of the OU Motel, if you look at it on Google Earth Satellite View, it looks like there's a sidewalk there, but there isn't. It's, it's just so worn in of a path into the ground. It's almost like a canyon on both sides because of so many people over the years walking through it to get to all the commercial stuff that's around there. So, if you could, Scott, just maybe briefly talk about this project and kind of the timeline we're on with it and stuff like that.
Councilmember Scott Sturz, Interim Director of Public Works. This is a project we've been working on for a very long time. It's kind of been hammered, and gone over, and gone through, and redone until we got to the point that we're at today. We're excited to get it going. It is definitely an area that is in dire need of some sidewalk and some attention in that area. Obviously, tonight, on your agenda is to approval of the contract, so we can get that started. We'll probably be seeing construction starting within thirty to sixty days, depending on contracting time, and when they can get everything delivered and the items that they will need for that. So, we'll have a pre-work meeting and get that work started. That work will probably take between six and nine months, hopefully, depending on weather. And so, we'll be out there working on it. It's not decided yet where they'll start north or south, and which direction they'll work. We'll kind of leave that partially up to the contractor and what works best for him, so that they can, we're not directing their means and methods on that. But definitely a project we're ready to get started.
So, if all goes smoothly this time next year, we'll have that probably done?
Absolutely. Should be done by this time next year.
Well, like I mentioned, it's, if you go through there, it's noticeable that not having a sidewalk is very needed. And I think it's one of the biggest missing sidewalk gaps in the city of Norman. So, very excited to get it done, and I appreciate all the work that you guys have done.
This one was identified on our sidewalk gap map in our transportation, our comprehensive transportation plan. And it is one that we're anxious to get knocked off that list and be able to move on to others on the list.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions from council? Yes, sir?
Wanted to make a comment about Items Eleven and Twelve. This is Summit Lakes Dam Project. This is a project that I think precedes every one of one council, maybe even Councilmember. I don't know, it's gonna be close. But I want to thank Beth McCullough and our city attorney for all that they've done and all the work that they've been doing, because this is one of three high-risk dams in Norman. It's the only one that the city does not maintain. But that's all about to change. The end is in sight. We have a finish line, so everybody at Summit Lakes, we're getting there.
All right. The motion on the floor is to approve the Consent Docket. Councilmember? You may cast your votes.
Been cast, and the motion to approve Items Two through Twenty-seven on the Consent Docket passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number twenty-eight. A resolution amending the Norman 2025 Land Use and Transportation Plan to remove property located at seventeen-twenty North Porter Avenue from low-density residential designation and place the same in the office designation. Is there a motion to adopt on the floor from, there is a motion to adopt on the floor from a prior meeting. Is there a representative of the applicant? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Tony Blatt, AG Let Architects, on behalf of the owner. Yes, we had the opportunity, and we appreciate the fact that we got to meet with staff and with some city council members to discuss some options, and ultimately to remove some north-facing parking, to remove some of the west parking spaces, to identify better what the materials would be on the proposed buildings, and to make sure that we retained, kept all of the existing trees along Porter Avenue. We think that the solution is a great one for the city, and the owner takes no exception to it. And we're happy to do so, and would answer any questions or comments.
Any questions from council? Yes, sir.
Would you maybe briefly talk about the stormwater management part of this? And also, I do want to say, I really appreciate you taking the time to come back and make some changes to the site plan. I currently feel pretty satisfied with what I see, so, but it is currently a vacant field. It had previously been approved for a residential neighborhood development. And now you're doing office that's got maybe, may not have more concrete, actually, than the neighborhood would have had. But would you talk about how you're gonna be managing stormwater on this site?
The site has a natural positive flow from east to west and to an existing inlet that's gonna go off of the northwest corner towards the residential area. The initial...
Pull your mic towards you.
Better?
Better.
Do you want me to? The, I'll try to speak a little louder. The, the original design that was done before we had some of the initial staff meetings and our meeting with the adjacent property owners was we were just gonna have a retention pond that was along the western boundary, which was what was in the initial residential development. One of the positive staff comments that was made is maybe we could integrate some rain gardens in the central portion of the, of the development. So, we've introduced three of those in various locations, so that they would capture water and filter it, and then take it to that stormwater detention area that's on the northwest portion of the property. So, ultimately, the idea is that we're managing water in a better way than the residential previous spud was being done.
That's the only question I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you, sir. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak on this item. Are there anybody registered to speak?
Chris Nanny? Mary Frances?
Yes. This is Mary Frances, Ward Seven.
Mary, can you pull the mic down just a little bit?
Okay. And yes, nut jobs like me are a little shorter. And I do appreciate the tall gentleman bending down toward the mic for us. We, nut jobs like me do approve of rain gardens. I just wish there was something that mentioned rain gardens in the ordinance here.
Bobby Chambers?
I found out what I wanted.
Thank you.
It's not food foresting, but I would vote for it.
That's all, mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Anything else from council? The motion on the floor is to adopt the resolution. Councilmembers? You may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt a resolution passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Item twenty-nine. Ordinance upon second and final reading, rezoning property located at seventeen-twenty North Porter Avenue from spud simple planned unit development to spud simple planned unit development district. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section. A motion and second. This is a companion item to the previous item. Any further questions from council? Fear not. Any further public comments?
Chris Nanny? Again, no. Mary Frances?
The same situation with this nut job.
And Evan? Okay. That's all, mayor.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance on second reading passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading. I have a motion and second. Motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast. Adopt the ordinance on final reading as a whole passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number thirty. Preliminary plat for VCN Development Edition, a simple planned unit development generally located approximately one-half mile north of Robinson Street on the west side of Porter Avenue. I'll entertain a motion to approve or reject the preliminary plat. I have a motion and second. This is a companion item to the previous two items. Are there any further questions from council? Yes, sir.
The, the site plan on this item number thirty shows the old one. Is, just want to clarify that that's...
Scott Sturz, Interim Director of Public Works. Yes, it is included, the old one is included, however, we got the new one...
Late, and weren't able to get it included in your packet. However, the new one with the changes that were made and the agreements that were made that matched the PUD is actually what is being approved tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. I have them here on our agenda. Yeah, they're updated online. Yeah, on, online, they're updated.
Are you good with that, councilmember? Okay. Any further public comments?
Mary Frances? Would you like to speak? Ms. Frances? Yes, ma'am?
Mary Frances, Ward Seven. I'd like to find out some information about this. If anyone on the council would care to speak to this, please explain. There is no explanation in this ordinance thirty of what a simple planned unit development is, other than where it's located. And so, that is my concern.
Scott, would you answer that question?
Question for Jane. Jane, could you share some thoughts with Mary Frances?
Jane Hudson, Planning Director. So, you're referring to item thirty?
Yes.
So, that's the preliminary plat. That's just referring to the zoning that is going to be on this property if adopted tonight. The simple planned unit development is just like our PUDs, but it's less than five acres.
Sir? Sir, you'll need to be at the mic to be able to answer. But you can surely ask.
So, to clarify, in working here with the nut job, Mary Frances, the, does that, doesn't explain to us first what a RUD is? And do you have plans for someone to go in and build something? That's what we're not getting information on. What is the real plan with this property?
Sir, can you please?
Sir, give us a name?
Bobby Chambers.
Thank you.
Okay, bear with me. I have to look at the numbers here, because I want to get this straight. But under item twenty-eight, that's the, and I'm sorry, that's the resolution. So, item twenty-nine, that is the actual ordinance. That is the SPUD. That's the zoning. And for this property, they're asking for the permission to have offices built there, and the site plans are included within that zoning ordinance, the SPUD.
And so, we're not going to get to see those here for the public?
Did, is, let me, let me just thumb through here and see actually what's, sorry, wrong way. So, this is the 2025 that they submitted. Is that okay if I go through this?
Please do.
Okay. So, this is the 2025. This is the resolution that they asked for to go from low-density residential to office. That's the subject tract. And then this is item twenty-nine. This is the zoning. This is the SPUD. And I, this is the site, but I don't believe, this is the site plan. We don't have any building elevations for this, I believe. But this is the site plan that shows the front building there adjacent to Porter, and then the proposal for the back building. And then this is the preliminary... And then this is the preliminary plat that they submitted.
And, uh, no information about the, uh, commercial buildings that are, uh, planned for this area?
Other than what's shown on the site plan and then in the narrative in the spud document? I'm not sure exactly what you're looking for, but they do, uh, talk about, uh, they talk about preservation of the trees, they talk about a site-proof fence, the parking requirements, lighting, uh, the exterior building materials, but again, we don't have any elevations for the buildings at this point.
Okay. And so, uh, when they talk about preservations of the trees, uh, do they say they will preserve the trees or, uh, how is that phrased?
So within the narrative, they discuss, uh, the large trees between the Masonic Lodge and the entrance will be preserved if possible. They refer to the utilities, uh, will be constructed on the north side. Let me go back one. So the utilities will be constructed on the north side so to avoid, uh, any damage to the root system of the existing tree line. That's on the entrance here on the south side of, on the bottom of this site plan. They talk about the large trees on the east side adjacent to Porter will be preserved if possible.
If possible.
If possible. There's a large elm tree in the northwest corner, they've shown up there at the top. It says that they will retain the elm tree and then, um, there's a landscape border that they refer to.
Yeah. And Norman is supposed to be a tree city.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anything from council?
Um...
Oh.
Evan? Evan?
Evan Dunn, Ward seven. I'd like to associate myself with all of the Francis's concerns. Maybe on certain issues like this...
Maybe we could just, you know, put the site plan images in the agenda. I don't know. I know it would take more paper and it'd take more time, but, you know, in order to preempt things like this, maybe that would be something to consider.
Thank you, sir. The motion on the floor. Oh, you are? Okay.
Um, just for everybody in the audience to understand that, um, while the agendas that are given out tonight do not have all of the documents, they are all listed online. So you can see the S P U D, you can see the site plan, all of those are listed. If you look at the agenda online, you can find the links to all of those things. Um, so they are always attached to the agendas online. So if you are interested in looking at the site plans or any of the attachments, um, just go to the website, look at our agendas, pull that up, um, and you can actually get every single five hundred pages of, of our documents. Um, I think that might help clear up some of the, the questions that you can see them beforehand and those are posted on Friday along with the agenda.
The motion on the floor is to adopt the preliminary plat. Council members, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast and the motion to approve the preliminary plat passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number thirty-one, a resolution amending the Norman twenty twenty-five land use and land use transportation plan to remove property located near the northeast corner of Indian Hills Road and Forty-Eighth Avenue Northwest, the residential designation and place the same in the commercial designation and high density residential designation. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the resolution. Have a motion and second. So, a representative of the applicant, Mr. Gunnar Joyce.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Gunnar Joyce with Reger Law Group on behalf of this applicant and with us tonight. I'll click through. Might be going backwards here. Let me, there we go. There we go. All right, with us tonight, Chris Anderson with, uh, S M C, the Civil Engineer on the Project, and B J Hawkins with T E C that provided the T I A with this project. So we're continuing, um, we've, we've done three projects now, I believe, right in this area that you guys have all recently seen in the past year and a half to two years. As you're well aware of, uh, the improvements that are planned in this area of Norman and especially Indian Hills Road. And so essentially, that's the plan tonight is how do we design around potential impacts when those could come, if those don't ever come. Uh, and basically, uh, we're going to mirror and I'll show you a plan that, uh, works both ways, just like Redlands, which is just to the east, and then Bridgeview, which was, uh, I think about two months ago in front of you guys, we've layered commercial and multifamily and then single family. So this is the site outlined in red there. It is a, just shy of forty acres. And then the aerials, you can see the I thirty-five Indian Hills corridor, um, we've, we're right on the Forty-Eighth Avenue Northwest intersection of Indian Hills. And then zooming in a little tighter, we are essentially right at the northern edge here of the city of Norman, city limits. That's that blue line. To the north is the city of Moore and there's a little sliver, uh, to the west, that's Oklahoma City. And then just to the east again is, is that Redlands Development and to the south is Bridgeview. So here's the current twenty twenty-five and zoning. Uh, right now, twenty twenty-five is low density residential and the zoning is a P U D that was approved in twenty eleven for single-family housing. The proposal tonight is basically the southern portion of this forty-acre site as commercial, uh, like you see just to the south and that hard corner and similar again with, uh, Redlands and Bridgeview. And then the north is for R M six, uh, multifamily housing. The twenty twenty-five request is for those two items. The multifamily zoning has a high-density residential twenty twenty-five request associated with it. The commercial zoning has a commercial twenty twenty-five, um, request associated with that. And then the third item in front of you tonight will be the preliminary plat. So I'll touch on all three. Here is the site plan, uh, as you can see there outlined in what's supposed to be purple looks a little black, uh, along the north is the multifamily. It's got, um, apartment complex and then about seven duplex lots as you move towards Forty-Eighth Avenue. And then the south of that public road, uh, is the commercial area that wraps around the already approved and preliminary platted hard corner. And then to the north outside of this property is more residential. Off to the east is the Redlands Development. City staff had a couple quotes in their staff reports noting that this will increase housing offered in the area with additional multifamily options and add commercial possibilities. And then I didn't touch on it, but as we looked at the aerials, there's substantial residential, uh, already built out and continuing to be built in more in the Oklahoma City area that, uh, additional commercial opportunities here will attract sales tax dollars to Norman. So I know we talked substantially about that when we did Redlands, it's still relevant now, so just to touch on it again. And then here's the preliminary plat associated with it. Again, it's the same thing to the north, the multifamily, R M six request and to the south, it'll be one commercial lot. Um, there was a T I A done, no negative traffic impacts were anticipated, both, uh, through B J's study and through the city's review of that. And the city staff has recommended approval of the preliminary plat. We met with you, many of you, um, very early in this project and it was, uh, pretty barren. It was a regular site plan that you would see for a, a typical preliminary plat, not a P U D. Uh, a lot of the feedback we initially heard was, we want to see more trees, we want to see parking landscape. Uh, the applicant, to their credit, has, has done that. It's quite a bit, uh, of green space. It is almost sixteen acres, so it's about forty percent of the entire site. Uh, obviously, the residential is very green, uh, hi, it, it's expected to be, you know, amenities for, uh, those apartment, um, uses up there on the north. And then the duplex sites look like the typical residential, uh, sixty-five percent, uh, impervious maximum there. There was one protest filed, it was the adjacent neighbor, uh, early plans did not show this connection point, if you can see, I don't think you can, but right there, um, on the duplex road, it looks like there's about six of them and then there's a spot that's a road leading north and then one more duplex lot as we move east.
Sir, please don't interrupt.
So there, there is a connection now and, uh, that was one of two points in the protest letter that has been added back in. The second one is about not wanting to have R M six right next to R one and that is something that, uh, we have included in many of the plans that we've recently approved. It's also outside of projects that we've discussed recently prevalent in Norman. There's just one example there, uh, where Landmark Fine Homes is building single-family right next to an apartment complex on Tecumseh. Um, so just one example that, that, that's pretty common. And then we also have here the site plans of the Redlands and Bridgeview, um, developments that we've, that we've brought forward recently. As you can see there, multifamily right next to commercial and then single-family i- is essentially what all three of these have proposed. Redlands is directly to the east, has the commercial stepped up to multifamily and then the very north end is single-family, which is, when we look back to this site, essentially the exact same layout, that, that layered approach of commercial, multifamily and then off-site here, but approved is the preliminary plat of Foxworth Edition, single-family residential. So, uh, we think that is a, a good use. It's a use that's been proposed and been approved many times over. Parks, Parkland here, there, the, uh, request was fee in lieu of Parkland, that was approved unanimously by the Park Board. And the reason for that is back in two thousand and ten, when all these properties were being initially zoned and preliminary platted, there was a two thousand and ten Gateway Park and Trails Plan and it is mostly to the east of this site, but as you can see, that red arrow shows the start of Gateway Park was actually the very northeast corner of Redlands. And if you remember, the Redlands, uh, zoning preliminary plat did designate a private Parkland in that area. And then the strip that connects to the Greater Park to the east is all privately owned right now. And so the funds that are part of the fee in lieu here will be used by the city, uh, to buy more of that land so that you get a complete city-owned Parkland. So we have fee in lieu as the request for this development, but that is in line with what has always been planned since two thousand and ten with the Gateway Park. So briefly, let's touch on Access Oklahoma. It's, it's a similar conversation that we've had in this area. Uh, we looked at, um, one on Indian Hills to the east, um, I think maybe two or three months ago and had the same conversation. Uh, the commercial, uh, would be the piece that's impacted. We think obviously it is needed now and could serve the community now without the turnpike, but should it come, essentially that frontage, uh, is going to be taken by the Turnpike Authority and then the commercial has both Redlands, Bridgeview and this project has more viable commercial to the north of where that taking would be. So essentially, it carves off some of the parking, some of the building in the front, but there's still the commercial multifamily, single-family allowances, uh, regardless of if and when it comes. So just to summarize, to recap, we have three items tonight. The first is the twenty twenty-five, which is taking low-density residential now that we know there's going to be substantial traffic sites, uh, or traffic improvements on this site. Uh, single-family is no longer what this needs to be desirable here with, with a big turnpike potentially coming through. So we're doing commercial, um, twenty twenty-five designation with the commercial zoning and then it'll be a high-density residential designation with the R M six zoning. And then the last item in front of you would be the preliminary plat to divide it up into the lots that are shown. We did not have, uh, anybody attend pre-development. We've worked with the surrounding neighbor to the best that we could. There is still that filed protest, but we have added back in that roadway connection and this was unanimously approved at Planning Commission. With that, have you take any questions?
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Holman? Yes. Um, let's see. Can you talk a little bit more about the stormwater management on the site? Again, empty field currently, so how, um, you mentioned the greens, the amount of green space, almost half, but, uh, how will you manage stormwater runoff on this site?
Yeah, absolutely. So by being straight zoning here, we're going to be forced to comply with R M six drainage and stormwater requirements and the C two requirements for the south portion there. Uh, the commercial has two detention ponds right along Indian Hills and then the residential has that one in the northeast. And then essentially, as, as, as we talked, the, the city stormwater regulations are, you can't increase stormwater flow or capacity onto, you know, an adjoining property owner. So those detention ponds will hold and then release at the historical rate. So, you know, the blank field right now, empty field, has that historical flow, historical release rate, and then those detention ponds will be used so that after we have the build out, it will release it at the historical rate as, as it is today.
And the, the, in the parking area, the commercial, all the little green islands, will they be done in a way that can, that will be collecting the stormwater in them?
So they haven't got into specific design yet, like we usually do on kind of the smaller site development, but, um, I know the expectation is for any of the commercial that, that is actually, um, viable and, and developed for it to, um, you know, be kind of that attractive turnpike frontage that you could expect, you know, like, um, Memorial Road in north Oklahoma City. Um, that's their goal, is that it's a very attractive, uh, high-end capturing sales tax dollars. And so associated with that is obviously, uh, L I Ds, B M Ps and, and the typical things that we present in front of you with, with the PUDs. With this not being a PUD, there's not that specific language drafted in, so that language right now is just the C two requirements, but I think what you see in practice will be different from the bare minimum.
And, um, the parking, uh, that's done under, since we've changed our parking regulations, this design reflects that you're not required to have more parking than you think you need?
Absolutely right. And, and that's part of the piece. I know, Councilmember Holman, you were the, one of the ones that we had very initial preliminary conversations on this and there was more parking shown, less green space shown, and it was just under the old allowances, right, the old requirements. And so with the minimums being lifted, that was a, a change that has happened throughout the design process.
So if we hadn't made that change, there'd be a lot more parking?
Be more parking than was shown, absolutely.
Um, the buildings, the commercial buildings, um, they're all one-story or anticipated to be one-story or, or any of them mixed-use at all or anything like that or two-story?
B J for the T I A, do, did you use one-story? Yep. So again, C two allowances, essentially, um, no cap on height and, and right there on the turnpike. I think that's something they want to keep in place, but the parking layout is, you know, just like you noted, they have to park what they expect and the bigger the building, the more parking you need. So the whole design is with one-story buildings right now.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Schiller?
Yeah, I have some questions related to, uh, stormwater and the turnpike. If you want to go to the slide that shows where the alignment might be. Um, so it basically takes off that whole front part of the commercial property, which includes those two detention ponds. So what is the plan for stormwater if that happens? Because I'm assuming that you're going to have to redesign your site plan with that in mind.
Absolutely correct. So right, if, if they take the detention areas, then the site plan will adjust and likely, you know, one, you're going to lose impervious coverage and so maybe those detention ponds get to be smaller than they are shown now, but yeah, absolutely would have to have a, uh, adjusted component so that when this is ultimately final platted, at each stage of the final plat, there's a way to handle each portion of the development's runoff. And so a, a simpler answer is probably if that orange line comes and takes off the frontage, then you could expect detention ponds to kind of be bumped up above where the property line would start.
Okay. And this might be for either Scott or Jane. What does that process look like to, do they have to come back with a new site plan? Like what is the, just trying to understand, are we going to see this again if the turnpike comes through and kind of what does that process look like for us?
We believe that that would be a significant change, so it would require a new preliminary plat and site plan approval. So that would come back before you, before that, what, those changes would be made.
Okay. Thank you for that. That's it.
Councilmember Pecot?
I have the same questions as Councilmember Schuler. So thank you.
Councilmember Grant?
Same.
Same.
Guys are thinking the same. All right. Is it an opportunity for members of the public to speak? Is there anybody on the list?
Mary Frances?
Mary Frances, Ward seven. Rezoning can be in multiple types. This particular rezoning is for residential and commercial. I'm wondering, since there's only 15 acres or so in green space, has any consideration been given to rezoning this entire 40 acres as green space? Since we would like to have more green space in Norman. And it seems to me that, that whenever you talk about rezoning, it's always to the benefit of, of commercial developers and not to the people who would prefer more green space. So, has there been any consideration for rezoning this area as green space?
To whom is that question, to whom is that question addressed?
Beg your pardon?
To whom is that question addressed?
To the developers.
Okay.
I think we're in public comment part right now, but I'm...
No, sir, we're in the public comment parts of it.
I'm happy to come back up after public comments done.
All right, thank you.
It might be better directed to city attorney on what that would take, but probably public comment.
You want me to answer? It has not. Ms. Francis, it has not. It has been, it's been, it's owned by somebody else, and they want to develop it into a commercial property. So, it hasn't been donated to the city as green space or anything like that.
Am I, am I correct in that currently, there are no buildings on this space, this 40 acres?
To the best of my recollection.
It is currently green. It is, there are no buildings.
That's correct.
Okay. It could be kept that way.
We don't own it. Thank you, ma'am. Is anybody else?
Evan?
Hi, Evan Dunn, Ward seven. I share Ms. Francis's concerns. The, the green space that is planned, my question would be, are we adding more responsibilities to our landscaping crews? Because if we did do something like what Mary Francis is suggesting, zoning it as green space, or zoning whatever garden space exists as a food forest, would negate any responsibilities on the city to provide that landscaping. That'd be something to think about.
Thank you, sir.
No more?
No more? All right. Any further comments? Yes, sir.
So, the properties currently zoned, low-density, R one?
Yeah, there's currently, currently a PUD approved for 288 single-family lots. I'll get back, right there. So, that, the whole area right now is zoned and approved for PUD development.
So, previously, it was approved for basically just a single-family suburban neighborhood to be built there.
That's right.
So, that's what could be built there right now without coming to city council for approval.
That's, that's correct. It's not standard R one, so they were small lots to try and add density. And then, the goal here is by losing some of that density and the need for density in Norman, we're kind of compiling the density into high-density residential on the north end, and then, creating a buffer of that turnpike with commercial.
So, possibly, if this was developed into single-family neighborhood with all the driveways and cul-de-sacs in the street, could potentially be as much or more impervious surface on the property than what we're doing, what you're proposing now?
Yeah, potentially could be.
Okay. So, I mean, given that, I would just say, I love the idea of it being green space or parkland, but the current zoning would allow for it to be developed right now as a single-family neighborhood. So, I, I think having an opportunity to increase density with apartments, which we need more of, and then, because of the reduction in the parking requirement, getting a lot more green space than would have existed, potentially, under the current zoning. So, you know, although I agree with Mary Francis and Evan both about having more green space, I think this proposal is better than the existing zoning that exists. And as the mayor pointed out, the owner of the property is not proposing to build a park currently, so. But it does have the connection, as you pointed out, on the north side of it allows for that multi-development connection, kind of like a greenway through the north side of that. So...
Absolutely.
I think that's a good opportunity, too, for not just connectivity for these neighborhoods, but to the north as well, to the neighborhoods in Moore, and to the west, that neighborhood that's in Oklahoma City. So, right here along this 48th Avenue is more Oklahoma City and Norman, right?
Right.
Depending what side of the street you're standing on. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Gunnar, what is the 2025 plan? What is the proposed use for yellow?
Low-density residential.
So, I think this is a, a good time to explain kind of what our land use plan looks like. We're currently in the process of updating what our land use plan is going to be for the future. So, I would encourage everyone, if you are interested in spaces being retained as green space, or what type of usage you want to see in the various land use plan, now is a great time to give that feedback to the AIM Committee, because that is what is going to dictate what our zoning is going to look like for, you know, the next 20 to 25 years. And so, I think this is a great conversation that we're having right now. And so, it's really important to get those kind of foundational beliefs of like how we want our community to develop into that land use plan, so that, that is a, basically a pathway to how are we going to develop and what kind of uses we're going to have in, in the future. So, we're doing that right now. So, if you would like to see different kinds of uses, please get in contact with the AIM Committee and share your feedback for that.
All right.
No other comments?
Thank you, ma'am. The motion on the floor is to adopt the resolution. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the resolution passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number 32, an ordinance upon second and final reading, rezoning property located near northeast, the northeast corner of Indian Hills Road and 48th Avenue Northwest from the PUD, Planned Unit Development, and place it in the same C2 general commercial district and RM six medium-density apartment district. I'll entertain, opt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section. A motion and second. This is companion item to the previous item. Any further questions from council? Hearing none, seen?
Mary Frances?
Okay. Be item number 32.
32 is not on my agenda.
Oh.
Does anyone have that on their agenda? I, I'm missing the last page.
Oh.
I would, since I haven't had time to take a look at this, I would ask that it be postponed.
Evan?
No comment.
All right. Any further, let's see, we got here. Any final, that's all we have. Any final comments from council? No. Motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance on second reading passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance. Have a motion and second. Motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance on final reading as a whole passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number 33, preliminary plat for the Whisk Green Trails Edition, generally located one-quarter mile east of 48th Avenue Northwest on the north side of Indian Hills Road. I'll entertain a motion to approve or reject the preliminary plat. Have motion and second. This is a companion item to the previous two items. Any further questions from council? Hearing none. Any further public comments?
Yes, ma'am. Mary Frances? Evan? That's all, ma'am.
All right. The motion on the floor is to approve the preliminary, preliminary plat. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to approve the preliminary plat passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number 34, an ordinance upon second and final reading, amending section 36, 514, R1, single-family dwelling district, 36, 515, R1A, single-family attached dwelling district, 36, 516, R2, family, R2 family, 36, 519, RM six, medium-density apartment district, 36, 520, R3, multifamily dwelling district, and section 36, 521, R O, residential office district of Article 36, 5 of Chapter 36, zoning to remove the building coverage maximum. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section. Have motion and second. Like to recognize Ms. Jane Hudson. Hi.
Good evening, council. Jane Hudson, planning director. So, yes, as you stated, we're here to amend the zoning ordinance, and this is regarding removing the residential building coverage maximum currently in the zoning ordinance. Currently, the building coverage is limited to 40% for all buildings within the residential zoning districts. The overall lot coverage is capped at 65%, and that includes your paving, pools, anything impervious there on, on the lot. The Board of Adjustment, if you are over, or you need to go, or you want to go over the 40% coverage, you have to go to Board of Adjustment. And these are just some numbers, and I know it's not a lot, but between 2012 to current, we've had 22 applications go to Board of Adjustment regarding coverage variances. 15 passed, four failed, three withdrew. And I think it's just, the important thing to note about this is the time and cost for a resident to go to Board of Adjustment. It's approximately 30 days, and it can be upwards of $500, and that's only if they don't hire an engineer, or an architect, or somebody to help them through that process. In 1996, the building coverage in R1 and R1A was capped at 35%. In ordinance 96, 97, 7, the coverage was increased to 40%. And then, with ordinance 7, 8, 36, they came back and they capped the overall coverage at 65%, which had not been in the code prior to that ordinance. So, we've talked a lot about strong towns, and so, I just want to discuss how we kind of got here. But within the recent strong towns discussions, there was direction and questions about drafting the accessory dwelling unit ordinance. And in talking about that, and that's a companion item here after this one, we started looking at some of the lots in the core area, which we think will be the area that will see the majority of these accessory dwelling units come in. And in the core area, a lot of those lots are smaller lots. They might not be the 6,000 square feet that we currently require in R1. And of course, there's also, you know, other lots that are outside the core area that might not be at 6,000 square feet. So, we were looking at a way, if somebody's going to come in and build an ADU, they're, they're really going to be bumping up against that 40%. And so, we thought if we take that 40% out, that will give people the ability to have their primary unit, and then, also have the secondary unit, and, and not have to deal with the 40% requirement. So, the proposed amendments are to remove the structure coverage maximum in the R1, R1A, R2, RM six, R3, and the R O districts. And this will allow people, we won't, won't see people coming to Board of Adjustment, too, so it'll be a cost saver for them as well. So, I just want to remind you that the impervious coverage for the lot is still going to remain at 65%. If they need to go over that, they still have the right to go to Board of Adjustment to request a variance to that. But, again, it takes out that 40% requirement, and it won't negatively impact adjacent property owners if they were going up to 75 or 80% with these second units on, on the lot. So, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions from council? Councilmember Holman?
Okay, so, the size of them, what is the maximum size that an ADU should be?
That's in the next item. This is the coverage itself, but in the next item, for the accessory dwelling unit, they're 650 square feet.
Is the maximum?
Is the maximum, mhm.
And so, okay, I'll save mine for the next one, then. Thank you.
So, just to clarify, I think what we're doing here, we're basically saying there's not a difference in between a driveway and a roof line, that both of them are considered impervious surfaces in terms of the calculation. And so, not making a distinction between the two, basically saying that both of them totaling 65% is the limit.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Your overall coverage, yes.
Councilmember Grant?
I just wanted to say I appreciate cleaning up the code, so that when we try and do this in the future, we're not going to have some quirky things coming through.
It's an opportunity for the public. Thank you, Ms.
Jane Crumpley?
Jane Crumpley, Ward four. I'm sorry, Matt, I could not hear your comment, nor could I hear yours. So, I'm not sure how you address the 65. I'm confused, because it says that, you know, the overall lot coverage is capped at 65%. So, what are we doing, what are we changing, what are we doing now?
There used to be a, it was 65% total, but only 40% of that could have been for the, for the unit itself, for the house. And so, we're just saying now that house, driveway, any piece of impervious surface is the 65%. Basically, we're getting rid of that 40% threshold. Does that clarify?
65%?
Remains in place.
You could have a driveway and...
Have everything, yeah.
All that kind of stuff, before you had to go to the Board of Adjustment or whatever.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Steve Ellis, 633 Reed Avenue. I understand the distinction between the impervious service limit and the building limit, but I wonder which of those constraints is actually really binding on someone. So, would the staff know what the average impervious service percentage is now? Are we, are people hitting that 65 boundary? And would they be hitting that 65 boundary if we... And would they be hitting that sixty-five boundary if we take away the housing limit? I'm a, I'm a big fan of the accessory dwelling unit program, so I want to see that happen. But I do think it will, it would behoove us at least to know whether or not we're getting a net increase in impervious surface. Not the limit, I know the limit is still the same, but we might still be getting more impervious surface if we allow accessory dwelling units, if the average impervious surface is a lot below the maximum right now. So, did anybody run the numbers on that one? Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Mary Frances?
Yes, Mary Frances, Ward seven. I too am very much in favor of accessory dwellings. And I like the idea of, of adding this to our code. However, I am not in favor of more impervious surface. And so, that is also a concern of mine. And I'd like to see somebody, as Dr. Ellis suggested, run the numbers on that. So, nut jobs aren't always opposed to things. I like the accessory dwellings.
Bobby Chambers? Evan?
I would support this. And the fact that this has come to council has kind of sparked some ideas about how I might do some work with Mrs. Loudenbach and get some incentives for alternative approaches to zoning.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember?
And I want to make on this. I know we're basically comparing impervious surfaces and roofs as the same thing. But if you think about a roof, it's actually a much more managed stormwater solution. It's got gutters. It might have an integral roof collection system that's actually connected to the storm sewer system. So, it's not just surface runoff from parking lots and things now, it's actually managed stormwater flow. So, I think it's a, it's an upgrade in that terms.
Thank you, sir. Anything further? All right. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Council members, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast and the motion to adopt the ordinance on second reading passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject final reading. I have a motion in second. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Council members, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast and the motion to adopt the ordinance on final reading as a whole passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Thirty-five. Here we go. An ordinance upon second and final reading amending Chapter thirty-six zoning. Sections thirty-six, one oh-one, definitions. Thirty-six, five-eleven, A-one, general agricultural district. Thirty-six, five-twelve, A-two, rural agricultural district. Thirty-six, five-thirteen, R-E, residential estate dwelling district. Thirty-six, five-fourteen, R-one, single-family dwelling district. And R, and, excuse me, thirty-six, five-seventy, Board of Adjustment, in order to define and create uses for accessory dwelling units and other zoning ordinance amendments for the purposes of compatibility therewith. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by second. Have motion in second. Ms. Hudson?
Thank you, ma'am. Again, Jane Hudson, planning director. And the second item, which is essentially a, a companion item to the, to the first item, we are looking at allowing for accessory dwelling units. This has been, ADUs have been discussed for years. I, I don't, I couldn't even, I've been here twenty years, so, I mean, it's been a long time. So, it is really nice to be able to bring this forward finally. I'm very excited about it. But what we are proposing is allowing ADUs in the residential zoning districts, as well as the agricultural districts. I just want to remind you, in the A-one and A-two, you can already have guest houses. So, this just allows someone to have an ADU. But we would be amending the zoning code to allow the ADUs in A-one, A-two, the residential estate dwelling district, R-one, and the R-one A district. And again, as Councilmember Holman asked a minute ago, there is a cap in the R-one district, and it would also be the R-one A, because the zoning ordinance, it stacks. So, whatever's allowed in R-one would be allowed in R-one A. But there is the six hundred and fifty square foot cap on the accessory dwelling unit in those two zoning districts. The general guidelines, the height cannot exceed the principal dwelling unit. And mobile homes cannot be permitted to be used as an ADU in any of the districts. I, I mean, I'm very excited about this. I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions. It's pretty straightforward. We, we get questions about it a lot, and so, I look forward to, to seeing how many applications we have come in.
Council, just to share a thought. Ms. Hudson and her team have worked tirelessly to put this final document before you, and it has received the attention of some of our neighboring agencies who are calling the city of Norman, asking for copies of what you're working on this evening. So, that's what leadership's all about. We appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Holman?
Yes, so, you mentioned the maximum square feet is six fifty, and that would be total, right? Even if it has two levels?
Yes, sir. It does specifically say total area.
And you mentioned that the height can't be taller than the primary structure. So, if it's a one-story house, they can't have a two-story ADU in the back, right?
That is correct.
And then, I do think it's a good question. I would like to know what the average, if there's a way for us to, GIS to find out, what the average lot coverage in Norman would be for residential. That would be interesting to know.
Yeah, not, not to get off track, I guess, but, you know, I look back at Scott, as they were asking that question, and I thought that we had actually done some of that a few years ago. So, we'll, let me talk about it and see what we find out.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful, so. And then, the short-term rentals, are short-term rentals allowed by right for these? As in Airbnb's? Or they have to?
Yeah, I was going to say they'd have to apply, but, yeah.
They would be allowed, but they still would have to apply and get approved. And, I think that one's, that one's it for now. Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Grant?
Yes. I just wanted to stick around parking. Somebody, if building one of these, could actually add parking garage to their ADU if they so choose, or they could do on-street, or share parking in the driveway.
So, the, the definition that we gave, one accessory dwelling unit with a total area of no more than six hundred and fifty square feet. To me, I mean, I guess we probably can address this, but to me, an accessory dwelling unit is the dwelling unit. So, if someone wanted to add a carport or, or something next to it, I don't, I don't see a reason why they wouldn't be able to do that. Again, we're looking at the sixty-five percent coverage. We're bringing an item forward next month to Planning Commission reviewing parking requirements for accessory dwelling units, which would release someone from the parking requirement. As it stands right now, if someone did bring in an application for an ADU, they would have to provide parking for it. We know that that's coming forward, so I'm hopeful that people will hold off until we can get that amendment to the ordinance as well. But they can park in the street if the parking is allowed. And at six hundred and fifty square feet, realistically, people are, are looking at one more parking place, probably. So, they can probably provide that parking on, onsite right now as it is. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Hudson, do the finishes on the outside of the exterior of the building have to match between the ADU and the house, or at least complement?
There's no design criteria established with this, so they could do what they wanted to.
Just a question that came up on a phone call, and I didn't know the answer. Any final comments from council? Do you have persons signed up?
Adam Ross?
Hello, Adam Ross, Ward eight. Very tired, but I'm very happy about this. I would also like to say more of this, please. When it comes to legalizing more housing with zoning reform, I don't think we should stop at ADUs. And I also don't think that there'll be enough. Oftentimes, when the topic of housing comes up, someone asks, do we even have a housing crisis? And to that, I say, it doesn't matter, and I also don't care, because the government shouldn't be regulating the housing market, waiting just until we're at the crisis point to legalize housing. What's being proposed here tonight is how cities used to grow everywhere. Neighborhoods evolved incrementally, and this is just the start of us returning to the right way to build cities. Today, when any increase in housing density is proposed, new housing is pitted against the mob mentality. And we hear concerns with all the usual suspects. I'm worried about traffic. I'm worried about parking, character of my neighborhood, property value. Frankly, none of those things are more important than the sanctity of human life. And I mean that, because that's what we're talking about here. I would like Norman to be very firm on the fact that human life is more important than free and convenient parking. The relationship between housing and homelessness is increasingly unignorable. For example, one of the only cities so far to completely eliminate single-family zoning altogether citywide is Minneapolis. And what happened as a result is, in the next four years, homelessness went down. Meanwhile, in the rest of the state of Minnesota...
Would you stick to the topic, please? It's not miscellaneous comments, it's comments on ADUs.
Yes, sir, and it is adding more housing, which helps with affordability. Homelessness went up in Minnesota, while Minneapolis saw a decrease because they legalized more housing. That's significant. They said to their developers, go build housing. And as a result, people got housed. We know this. I think we've been told this enough times now, that this is what has to be done to fix our cities. This is good for housing affordability, it's good for our economy, and it's also good for our businesses, by the way. Because what, what Norman small business doesn't want every household in Norman to have more money in their budget each and every month? So, this is a very good thing, and I'd love to see more of this. Also, it's great that we beat OKC to the punch, as well as every other city in Oklahoma. I say, let's keep it that way. Let's continue to lead Oklahoma on zoning reform, because thus far, no city has regretted doing this. So, thank you to the council and staff, especially, for working hard to put this together. I appreciate you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Jane Crumpley?
Jane Crumpley, Ward four. I'm very concerned about the impact on our neighborhood. Ward four, Ward seven, we're going to be the most impacted. I've read the ordinances, but I am not an architect, or a developer, or a builder. And so, sometimes the concepts of three feet, four feet, no more than this, mean nothing. And I called my councilperson and asked to have a board meeting, or a neighborhood meeting, so we could really ask these questions. But I never got a response. So, I mean, I don't know, am I for this? Am I against it? You're talking about somebody who bought a house in ninety-six, and now has a two-story triplex next door, so that they look in every window on the north side of our house. We have a hotel behind us. You know, we have single driveways in the four-hundred block of Elm. Somebody does an ADU, they have a single driveway, what happens? I've heard lots of talk, well, we'll put it on the street, parking on the street. I called and asked, okay, if we have parking on, that it'll be on our side of the street, because that's where you can park if there's something in the stadium. So, what do we do? How do we put our trash out? And the person I talked to in planning went, I don't know. I talked to utilities. Where do we put our trash? I don't know, for pickup. We can't put it in our driveway, because then we can't get in and out. Surely, you don't expect me, at ninety years of age, to haul my stuff across the street for it to be picked up? These are the questions that neighbors and all, we just wanted to sit down and talk, and ask all these questions to really understand. I mean, I've tried to, I've watched planning. I mean, I try to be on top of everything, but I see this as a major impact. And I can't see it as a positive thing at this point, because I don't understand enough about it. So, I'm just very disappointed. I mean, interestingly enough, in the Tallahassee paper yesterday, I read, I'm from Florida, so I read the Orlando paper and Tallahassee paper. Tallahassee is a, a university town. And there was a big story. At Wednesday meetings, commissioners will hold a public hearing before making any changes to the city's land development code to make it easier to build an ADU. We haven't had any public meeting with...
Stephen Ellis?
Steve Ellis, Ward four. I want to speak in favor of this proposal for accessory dwelling units. I do think that they are highly likely to have some impact on our affordable housing crisis, at least on the margin. And I think it's important that we go in the, the correct direction that way. But I, I really do think it would have been nice to see a little bit of just sort of analytic work to see whether or not it's going to make a major dent or not. It might be difficult to determine how many accessory dwelling units we got, but it would take a lot to, you know, get over our just general housing crisis. And it, they probably wouldn't be sufficiently affordable to really help us with our homelessness crisis. So, what I want to suggest is that we need to be, you know, keep our eyes on the prize. This is a very good step, so I'm pretty happy. But it's also really important for us to, to recognize that we've got lots of further steps to take. And I think, just on the sort of general issue of, of running the numbers, I was really surprised that I didn't get any answer to the question that I asked last time, you know, on the last item. And I think this is a, a sort of general issue with the way we handle these sorts of things. You know, if we're going to, you know, change around the rules, we had, should have some pretty good analytics about what exactly is going to be the net impact of that. So, knowing, you know, how many accessory dwelling units will be built, and what that would do to the net impervious surface on average in Norman, I think would be a really good thing to know, because is the next thing we need to do, work on a stormwater utility, because we're increasing stormwater? I, I think that's possible, but I don't know, because I haven't seen what the average impervious surface is. If people are not bumping up against the sixty-five limit now, it won't be a problem, but they might be. That's what we need to know before we go forward with stuff like this. So, I hope we'll get a little bit more, you know, research into what we're trying to do here. I think this is the right direction, but I don't know it's going to solve the problems that people think it will solve. Thanks.
Mary Frances?
Mary Frances, Ward seven. I didn't understand the response that was given earlier about short-term rentals. And I'd like to hear an explanation of whether or not that is specifically denied in this ordinance, which is what I hope, that short-term rentals will be specifically denied. And if somebody knows the answer to that, I'd love to hear it. Ordinarily, I'm in favor of these dwellings, accessory dwellings, but not with short-term rentals.
Ms. Walker, would you mind adding?
Sure, no problem. Where short-term rentals are already allowed by right in zoning districts, that has not changed with the addition of accessory dwelling units.
I'm sorry, you dropped your voice, I didn't hear what you said.
Where short-term rentals are allowed by right in zoning categories, that does not change with the addition of accessory dwelling units. So an accessory dwelling unit could be a short-term rental if it went through the license process and was able to get licensed.
So it could be a short-term rental?
Yes.
That's very disturbing. I mean, bed and breakfasts all over again, everywhere, in your front yard.
Thank you, ma'am.
Bobby Chambers.
I wanted to add, too, that I appreciate what the young man said about Norman taking the lead. This last two years, I've been out of the country a lot, and been to many different countries, and we are so lucky to have what we have. And we are so fortunate to be able to look to our future and plan for greener places, greener spaces, and to provide more housing for everyone in our city. And I want to encourage you to continue to look that way. At the end comments, I have some other things I want to say about greener spaces, but regarding this, I wholly support what you're doing.
Thank you, sir.
Until Ms. Crumpley spoke, I was going to kind of suggest that we might modify it to allow for there to be an additional story. Say, it's a one-story home, but they want to add an ADU. Allow them to make it two stories if the parking is underneath. If they used a podium design, we would, you know, we'd still minimize the impermeable surfaces. Just a thought.
Thank you, sir.
No more comments?
No more comments. Any final comments from council?
Thank you. So I've got plenty of things to say on this, but first, I want to address Ms. Crumpley's comments. We, as a council, are very aware of some of the problematic triplexes, quadplexes that we have in town. We're sensitive when talking about this 650-square-foot number. And to put 650 square feet in context, you're probably thinking, this row of seats, you know, basically where you're sitting right here. So an accessory dwelling unit not larger than that kind of footprint. So we're not talking massive units, we're not talking about big Airbnb, or bed and breakfasts. I would like to see us drill down on the short-term rental thing, though, because I think that could be problematic, so we need to get in front of that one, I can't deny that. But as far as the ADU ordinance in particular, so as a longtime proponent of housing affordability, this proposed policy change has been among my highest priorities as a city council member. I have a lot of strong feelings on the subject that I want to share. A lack of housing options has had negative impacts across the board, the biggest of which is the unhoused crisis that we are experiencing. Instead of just focusing on how to pull people out of the river, we need to be going upstream to find out why they keep falling in in the first place. So why ADUs? Because their solution to several problems. ADUs promote urban infill, allowing cities to increase housing stock with a light touch of density, and without the need for extensive new infrastructure. Since ADUs are built on existing properties, they can leverage existing infrastructure, such as water, sewer, transportation, and power systems. Smaller living spaces often have a smaller ecological footprint, and this supports sustainable development and can contribute to more efficient land use. ADUs enable multi-generational living arrangements by providing a separate and private space for family members. This can be especially beneficial for elderly parents wanting to age in place, adult children who have returned home, or extended family members promoting community support and connection. ADUs provide an additional housing option within existing neighborhoods without the need for large-scale development. This helps increase the overall housing stock and contributing to housing affordability. They often cost a fraction to build versus traditional single-family homes, making them a more attainable housing solution for a diverse range of different household sizes and income levels. ADUs can be designed to complement the existing architecture and character of neighborhoods, minimizing the impact of the visual aesthetics of the area. This helps maintain the charm and identity of established communities and reduces the pressure to demolish historic structures in order to make way for new housing. As we mentioned, Norman's ordinance will dictate the ADUs will be a maximum of 650 square feet, and that they will not increase impervious coverage of a site by more than 65% currently allowed. There is language in the ordinance that states that ADUs will be subordinate to the principal dwelling onsite and will not contradict the existing character of the neighborhood. All in all, ADUs are going to be one of the major tools that helps get out of the housing crisis, and I am ecstatic to throw my support behind this initiative. Thank you.
Yes. To address short-term rentals, that's its own ordinance, as I understand it, and one that we intend to review. If it's not on committee schedule already, I promise you, by retreat times, we'll be talking about it again. And I do think that we can address some of the shortcomings currently through revising that ordinance. Second, like Councilmember Peacock, I'm so happy to be voting on this tonight and get it across the finish line, especially seeing, and in retrospect, I wish we had done this, but in OKC, I already saw their neighborhood alliance was already doing meetings in the community to get buy-in for ADUs, and here we are set to approve it. I also am very grateful for how forward-thinking we are on this, because I had a constituent reach out to me in the first year of my term who was interested in aging-in-place initiatives. And in her booklet, ADUs were a part of that strategy. And when we did the Affordable Housing Town Hall, we had Richard McHown, as a developer, explain ways to increase affordable housing and reduce, actually, phosphorus and nitrogen and all the things that go into our lawns by building an ADU in the front. Like, we're talking about detached ones, but actually, these could be attached to houses. And so, in his example, it was also like an aging-in-place scenario, where somebody who was elderly but not related to the family but treated like family could have had the opportunity, instead of going to an assisted-living home, actually stay onsite and live with the family and age in place. So anyways, I'm happy to throw my full support behind this tonight. And in regards to Ms. Crumpley's comment about a general Ward four meeting, we can do one of those again. As Planning Director Jane Hudson said, we're still going to be talking about the parking component, and so there are some opportunities to get feedback from the community. Thank you.
Yes, I appreciate that, and I agree with the comments made by my colleagues. You know, I contemplated proposing an amendment to prohibit short-term rentals in ADUs, but as Councilmember Grant said, we may be looking at our short-term rental ordinance as a whole anyway, as a separate matter, now that we've had one for a few years. Many cities are starting to revise the ordinances they originally passed a few years ago, when Airbnbs kind of became prominent. So we'll be looking at that separately, and as Councilmember Grant mentioned, the parking separately as well, and how they impact the whole city. And as they mentioned as well, you know, this is really for the whole city of Norman. We've already had a few new developments in the last few months that have come forward that are suburban-type developments, but they're including ADUs in their designs, so that not just the core area will have ADUs. The goal being that every neighborhood in Norman that doesn't have a restrictive HOA covenant, and maybe some of them will even try to change that, will be doing this so that we can make better use of the existing land that we have in the city that we've already developed. I think ADUs help provide a counter to sprawl. They don't, they won't stop it, but it allows us to have one more option, as opposed to building one more house on the edge, maybe somebody builds an ADU in the backyard of an existing house. A lot of the existing ADUs in Norman, today I was just looking at one alleyway on Campus Corner, where almost the entire alleyway has garage apartments in the back along the alley. Most of them are one-story, there's a couple that are two-story. And the people that I've known over the years that have lived in these type of places are restaurant workers, people that work on Campus Corner, or work in bars or restaurants on Main Street, students that can't afford the big, nice, new apartment buildings that are being built, or they can't afford to live in the dorms either. You know, a lot of students that want to live by themselves and keep to themselves, and the ADUs have provided a very good, very close-to-campus option that's real affordable. And a lot of the people I've known that have made the choice to live in these ADUs over the years, again, like I said, are people that work on Campus Corner or Main Street or, you know, Midway Deli or The Earth, places where a lot of them end up riding their bike or walking, and things like that. And as mentioned as well, this was recommended as one of the top things we could do, one of the lowest-impact ways we could help increase housing options and density without redeveloping an entire neighborhood, or scraping an entire property clear to build a multi-story apartment building. This is a way to increase density without completely transforming an entire street or neighborhood. And as Mr. Ellis said, it won't solve our housing affordability issue in Norman, but it will help a lot, and it's something Strong Towns has identified as being a very impactful but low, low-impact but very impactful way to address housing issues and provide alternative options to just continuing to build further and further out on the edge. So I'm looking forward to continuing this discussion and the related topics of parking and short-term rentals, and I'm hopeful that we'll start seeing more new neighborhoods proposed that have these included in them already, so when they start being developed from day one, that these can be included in it, so they're not having to go back in. But as one of the speakers mentioned, these are examples of ways our cities, Norman included, originally developed over the years prior to World War II, when we started requiring setbacks and minimum parking standards, and, you know, every street's got to be four lanes wide, and every use has to be separated out so that you have to drive, and you have no choice but to drive. And that's the type, that's the cities we've built for the last 70 years, forcing people to rely on a vehicle. And we have an opportunity now to go back to the way cities were originally built, which were to the human scale. And so I think this is a good way, and we'll continue working on addressing the other issues related to it. And once again, I'm real proud that Norman gets to be a leader in the state of Oklahoma on this matter. Thank you.
No, Mayor.
Motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance on second reading passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading. I have motion and second. Motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance on final reading as a whole passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. There you go. Miscellaneous comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the city council. Due to Open Meeting Act regulations, council is not able to participate in discussion during miscellaneous comments. Remarks should be directed to council as a whole and limited to three minutes or less. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers registered for this item?
Yes, Mayor. Marguerite Larson.
Marguerite Larson, Ward six. I just wanted to address something that I saw during your study session regarding Norman Music Fest, and the discussion of not supplying the $50,000 to Norman Music Fest that has been done previously. I think that would be a mistake. It brings in so much traffic, it brings in so many things for the downtown businesses. They make money that goes back to the city in taxes. I think by keeping it free and open, it's including people who may not be able to afford to pay to come, but would like to come because this is a good event. So when you guys go back and you discuss this, and you talk about whether you should fund or you shouldn't fund, my preference, of course, would be to totally fund Norman Music Fest, as you have in the past. Thank you.
Jane Crumpley.
Jane Crumpley, Ward four. I appreciate the comments of coming back to address parking and short-term rentals. I'd already asked if these could be short-term rentals, and I was told yes, because apparently these ADUs can be, they're by right if they meet the requirement. I assume that neighbors, we won't know what's happening next door, whether it is by right. But that's the kind of thing, to me, that would have been nice to have a city meeting to talk about concerns, answer questions, and all, instead of piecemealing, and now coming back, now we're going to talk about, you know, whether we can use them as short-term rentals, and what we're going to do with the parking. I also am a little bit offended by continually hearing, "We need affordable housing." Center City Form-Based Code allowed for the teardown of multiple units that were affordable housing, homes, small little apartments, duplexes. And what we built and was allowed to build is not affordable housing. People are paying $900 to $1,100 a month for one bedroom and a bath in a common area, but they're continually building them. So now, we're talking about coming into our neighborhoods, and we want more density, we want more affordable housing. I mean, it's, I'm not saying it's a bad thing, I just am concerned about the changes in what will happen in our area as far as enforcement, whether, I mean, we already have problems with parking across the sidewalk and all of these kinds of things. So, I mean, I, I'm sorry, most of the things the city does, I'm really positive about. This one, I am concerned, big-time concerned. Thank you.
Tom Aldridge.
Good evening, y'all. Tom Aldridge, Ward one, Norman Adult Softball. First of all, I apologize to each and every one of you for your emails blowing up the last few months. It happens. And of course, I want to talk about Norman forward. Nine years removed now, we still don't have an adult softball complex. I understand better than most how the finances worked. I was on the Ad Hoc Committee for the adult softball complex. Right now, we don't have a place to play. We're in the spring, fields are not being used. My teams, our teams, instead of coming to Norman... My teams, our teams, instead of coming to Norman, are going to Mustang, Wheeler, or Oklahoma City, Arcadia, other cities, and spending their tax dollars there. I don't expect, of course, it's not on the agenda, it's not on forefront of everybody's minds. Maybe it needs to be, because there's a lot of tax revenue that comes in from other cities, other states into Norman to play softball, which should be probably the, you know, one of the biggest softball communities in the nation. Got a pretty good softball team here. And that's, I guess that's about it. Thank you.
Richard Baxter.
Don't start my time.
I won't.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Baxter, founder of nonprofit organization Racism Stinks. Racism Stinks is a coalition of diverse people unified in the task of healing the racial divisions in our community by educating and building strong allies. And as always, I have a joke for you. Where's my guy, Michael? One of these times, he's going to laugh. Okay, Shadow Skunk is our mascot, and so have another skunk joke. Why don't skunks have to pay taxes? Because they only have one cent. Michael, I'd never get this. Okay, somebody got it back there. All right. Right now, hate continues to thrive around the world with attacks and wars on various groups of people and individuals. We want to eradicate hate from the world, but we can band together to shine the brightest light on positivity. Norman is a city with its own challenges, historic and present, yet with its challenges, Norman has found a way to be welcoming to various cultural communities from around the world. Racism Stinks wants to honor the people of Norman's effort with a collaborative project, an international parade. Racism Stinks is now an official registered student organization at OU, and we're looking to partner with every cultural registered student organization at the university. We want to partner with the Oklahoma Veterans Associations, the Norman First Responders, and the city of Norman. Norman can lead Oklahoma once again with the largest international parade. We will be conducting a citywide survey for community buy-in that we are sure to receive outstanding responses. Past cultural collaborations in our country have contributed to significant advancement in race relations, and we are creating spaces for new cultural collaborations. Our motto is collaborate, outshine hate. We're calling for volunteers. We want you to join us and help show the world that cultural collaborations are the best way to drive out this age-old issue. Why? Because racism stinks. There you go. Thank you.
Congratulations on passing the ADU thing tonight. That was a good thing. I think we need to be a little bit worried about some over-enthusiasm for this kind of stuff. It seems to me that ADUs are really good, in part because they're a really serious anti-sprawl measure. I think they might make a big dent in that, and that's probably worth doing it. But they probably won't fully address our affordable housing issues. I think that is generally conceded. But I think we need to recognize that ADUs are going to be built where they make some economic sense for the owners, do that or, you know, building the grandma pad basically for personal reasons. But where there are ADUs, they're likely to be at market-rate places, so we're not probably going to get a huge move the needle on our affordable housing issues. So I think it's important that we recognize ADUs for what they are, which is a really good thing. I mean, stopping sprawl is actually a super-important thing, but it probably isn't going to do very much for our worries about the unhoused population. Might help on the margin, that's possible, but I do think that we need to be making more sort of like direct, making low-income housing affordable. The second sort of over-enthusiasm issue that I want to address today, and it's part just because I spent all my day and part of my time back here working on it, is I've been working on a paper that my spouse and I are doing on the implications for tax increment financing on public education in Oklahoma. And, you know, the Entertainment and Arena District, which is sort of everybody's thinking about, but not a lot of people are talking about, I mean, despite the fact that there was a meeting at OU about this that several city people attended, you know, it turns out that if you divert more than about 50% of the ad valorem tax from a town like Norman, given what our tax structure looks like, it actually hurts Norman public schools, not only hurt schools across the state, but Norman public schools actually gets net less money than they would from a certain kind of taxing area. So I think we've got to be really, really careful and do our due diligence before we get enthusiastic about various kinds of programs. And, you know, the people who are in favor of that arena and entertainment district, you know, have have promised for about a year now that there will be some studies coming from the state and from various private sector groups that are going to talk about the value of that economic development, and we just haven't seen them yet. So be there.
Thank you. Thank you for a great job you've all done. I can't tell you how impressed I really am. It's been a long time since I've been to a Norman City Council meeting. Few things that weren't discussed today and weren't on your agenda that I wanted to bring to your attention to think about all year long is our public transit system here in Norman, and to maybe look and consider to what other cities have done in the United States and around the world. But let me tell you two cities that you should look into. Olympia, Washington, the capital of Washington, a small, little city, decided that they did not want a mass transit system with a rail line. I'm trying to think of what it's called, but a light rail line. And they didn't, and a man that presented it to them said, "You don't want to do what Portland, Oregon did." They put in one little light rail system like Oklahoma City has done, one mile, two mile, three mile, and now they have, you know, every major little town in that county connected going to Portland. And that is something that the city of Norman should consider, is work in partnership with Cleveland County cities and bring them to Norman easily and nicely, and work at getting government grants, federal government grants, that pay for 75% of it. Just that's one of the top things I think of when I come to Norman. I was raised in Harrah, Oklahoma. Norman, Oklahoma was always the leader of wonderful ideas like bicycle trails and making things accessible for students a little easier, and I hope you continue to be part of that. In your discussions today, and we talked about green spaces, I would like you to also think about other cities in America that have wonderful, beautiful, green spaces. So they're bringing in a freeway right through the heart of Norman. Work with the city, the state, sorry, the county, the state, and the federal government to make sure that when that freeway comes into our city, it comes with a huge green space and that they pay for it. That's a city's responsibility as much as it is anyone else's. New York State, in Long Island, they have highways that are just, and in Virginia, have highways that are just for cars, no, no big trucks, and they're beautiful green spaces. As for living facilities and green spaces, consider Newport Beach, California, and also Orange County. Orange County is a great example of how Newport Beach wrestled with Orange County so that you have beautiful green spaces and healthy living. Quality of life matters. The young man that spoke here and told us about that, all this living for money doesn't make us happy and doesn't make everyone happy, but our quality of life matters. Oklahoma is at the bottom of many life quality indicators as compared to other states in the United States, and hopefully Norman can be and continue to be the leader of Oklahoma to keep us from staying at the bottom. Women's health care is the worst in America in Oklahoma. Health care in general, children's health care, these are issues that I...
Hi, everyone. Thank you. Evan Dunn, Ward Seven. Last week, we did the perfect breath. Want to do one? Okay. I teach this on the second Tuesday and the fourth, excuse me, the second Thursday and the fourth Thursday for the next three months over at The Well at 7:00 PM. Everyone is welcome to come. Ready? In, two, three, four, five, six. Out, two, three, four, five, six. In, two, three, four, five, six. Feel your body expand. Councilman Peacock was talking about, how do we address these issues at the fundamental level? We've got to confront our fears. A lot of people are terrified to speak in public. A lot of people are terrified by cold water. Both of those experiences are activating your adrenal systems, your hormonal systems. Norepinephrine is being produced. You have to posture your life against the challenges. You cannot just take the challenges. You have to recognize that gravity is real, the air molecules around us are real. There is power in our postures. There is power that is latent and undeveloped. In the military, they get this. See, the body has these extremes, and we need to go to them. We need to go to contact, we need to compress, and then we need to trace the body in these increments. When you do that, you are becoming a better person because you're delivering more of the nutrients and the oxygen that your cells need more perfectly because you're conforming to your body's DNA design. And when you do that, you're evacuating more of the toxins more efficiently. I've already got $800 raised. These ideas, coupled with food foresting, coupled with a massive incentive program, they need a bigger platform. April 3rd is the due date for running for Congress. I'm going to try to do it. I feel called to do it. I feel like these ideas deserve...
Council, we are adjourned.